I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I will ask the clerk to call it over.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Snae.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Herniman.
Here.
Councilmember Kayler.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show, all seven members of council are present this evening. At this time, this is a public hearing notice. A public hearing with Tiffin City Council will be held in Council Chambers 51 East Market Street on Monday, June 3, 2024, 7:00 PM, with the consideration of ordinance 2024-41. An ordinance responding to petition number 2024-02 vacating the alley off of West Market Street running north and south between lot number 598 of Hemmings Reserve and the alley of St. Clair Street, running east and west between lot numbers 596 and 597, and lot number 15, all Hemmings Reserve in the Third Ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio. At this time and place, anyone wishing to address council may direct their questions to myself. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at this time. Minutes from May 6 regular and committee of the whole minutes. Any questions on those? Seeing none, those will be approved as presented. We are now under committee reports, starting with the Finance Committee. Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilmember Kayler.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No reports, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Hayes.
Thank you, Madam President. A Personnel and Labor Relations Committee meeting was held on the corner of North Sandusky Street and Hall Street on May 29, 2024, starting at 6:13 PM. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss Mayor's request for legislation 24-21, an appointment to the Civil Service Committee, and any other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members John Hayes, Cheyenne Thacker, and John Kayler. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, Law Director Zachary Fowler, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, and Councilmembers Aaron Jones, Scott Herniman, Kevin Reesner, and Dennis Snae. Councilman Hayes asked Mayor Wilkinson for the basis of the appointment. The mayor stated that he met with the appointee and discussed her experience and interest in serving on the committee. Councilman Kayler asked about the role of the Civil Service Committee. Administrator Dutrow explained the committee's function, including working with the hiring lists and policies for Tiffin Police and Fire. Councilman Snae asked about the experience of the appointee, and Mayor Wilkinson referred to the appointee's resume and her relevant current professional role. Councilwoman Thacker motioned to have legislation drafted approving the mayor's appointment. Councilman Kayler seconded the motion carried on a vote of three to zero. With no other business, our meeting adjourned at 6:19 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Snae.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have a report. A Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee meeting was held on May 29, 2024, at 5:15 PM on site at the corner of Hall and North Sandusky Streets. Attending were committee members Cheyenne Thacker, Aaron Jones, Scott Herniman, Kevin Reesner, and Dennis Snae, along with councilmembers John Kayler and John Hayes, Law Director Zach Fowler, Mayor Lee Wilkinson, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, City Engineer Matt Watson, and Public Works Superintendent Brandon Burner. Members of the public that attended are as follows: Dale Graham, Tess Walker, Jill Pozniak, Reverend Amy Vittoro, Pete Myers, Colleen Myers, Barbara Trapp, Tom Masterson, Victor Perez, Charity Ames, Judy Munn, Teresa Pravino, Steve Reesner, Mary Reesner, and Stephen Leopard. Thacker called the meeting to order. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss Mayor's request for legislation 24-20 for removal of stoplight at Hall and North Sandusky Streets, and any other business that may come before them. Thacker asked the administration to inform council why they wanted the traffic signal removed. Burner gave the history of the light. The traffic signal box is old and a lot of the parts are obsolete. There was a study on the light done in October of 2020. At that time, it was determined that the signal was unwarranted, so if council decides to keep the light, then it would not qualify for grants through ODOT. Watson gave information for crash data at that intersection, with 62.5% of crashes being the result of a rear-end collision. At the request of Thacker, Watson explained the process for removing a traffic signal. Herniman was against the removal of the light. He told the committee that he helped lead a petition of 153 residents in 2021 to keep the light. His main concern is safety. He thinks the intersection is the connection point for many neighborhood spots, including Applejack Park, Noble School, and Shake Shack. Fowler reminded the committee that the city administrator has the power to make decisions for traffic signals. He also recommended the committee look at the Ohio Traffic Control Manual, which states that if we must keep, which states that we must keep all traffic signals in good repair. He advised the committee to make no decision at that meeting and to gather more information. Kayler agreed with Herniman. He lives nearby and was concerned about residents being able to back out of their driveways and pedestrians. The light, he thought, slowed down speeders, too. Reesner said that he would give weight to Herniman and Kayler's concerns because they live in the area. Fowler offered the option that council could order a new study. Members of the public, Dale Graham, Tess Walker, Jill Pozniak, Reverend Amy Vittoro, Pete Myers, Colleen Myers, Barbara Trapp, Tom Masterson, and Victor Perez offered comments of concern with removing the light. Concerns were related to the following topics. They believe the light slows down speedy drivers on Sandusky Street between Six's Corners and Miami Street, safety for pedestrians and drivers, semi-truck traffic, the time of the previous study, getting out of their driveways. Some hoped a new study would account for new bus patterns and school traffic. No action was taken at the meeting. The committee plans to gather more information to make a better informed decision. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 6:08 PM.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions on that report? Okay, thank you. And Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Herniman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, we are now under reports of the officers. His Honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. So this past Saturday, June 1, Bryce Coon and Mason Farrell from the Public, or from the Parks and Rec Departments, they teamed up with Isaac Walton League to hold the fishing derby. They had a record turnout, and I saw some large fish being caught. Looked like a good time was had by all. I was able to serve as a judge with Chief Polly for the Shark Tank event at Tiffin Middle School on May 21. The Tiffin Police Department concluded the 2024 Citizens Police Academy with our graduation on May 26. I want to say thank you to all the citizens who attended and graduated, and to Sergeant Jared Watson, the lead instructor. And Liz Crook was a member of that class, so she's a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy. This past week, I traveled to Oak Harbor to watch the Calvert High School baseball team win their fourth district championship in a row. We traveled to Louisville, or Lewisville, I'm not sure how you pronounce it in Ohio. I know in Kentucky it's Louisville, but in Ohio, I think it's Lewisville, to play in the regional tournament, and just want to congratulate the Calvert High School baseball team on a great season. We had the Memorial Day Parade on Memorial Day, May 27, followed by the memorial ceremony at Rotary Park. And on May 30, we observed the police and fire training with the lifelight. I got to take a ride in the helicopter. That was kind of nice, seeing Tiffin from 500 feet up. It was a little different from walking the streets. On May 31, which I joined the Tiffin Bike Club, thanks to Cassandra Gooding with a group of 20 other people, and we rode around, starting at Hedges Boyer Park, and had a little route around town, and that was very enjoyable. Enjoyed that. And tonight, we have a representative here from Rumkey, and we're ready for your update.
Mic on. Good evening, everybody. For those I haven't met, my name is Blake Austin. I'm the Municipal and Public Sector Specialist for Rumkey Waste and Recycling. Basically, what that means is I'm Nick's contact at Rumkey for day-to-day things going on throughout your community. I tend to come to a council meeting once or twice a year to kind of check in and discuss the ongoings in your community, and also at Rumkey. Part of the reason I'm here tonight is to discuss the big, or the bulk item pickup that we have scheduled in your community next week. It generally occurs on the residents' normal pickup days, so they can set five items. It's up to five items. We started enforcing that a year or two ago after things got out of hand, and, you know, drivers will swing by and pick it up. They don't always pick it up with the trash. There's generally a truck that follows. So if you have residents calling saying, "They picked up my trash. I didn't take the bulk items," that truck's probably, probably on the way. Like I said, it's a five-item limit, and we want to make sure we aren't collecting any refrigerated items with Freon in them. We don't accept car parts, including tires. That's a big, big no-no in landfills. You can't have tires in landfills. And then also, another thing that we've seen that's been a common item in recent years is liquid paint. If there is paint, it needs to be completely dried out, but we can't take a bucket or a couple of gallons of liquid paint. It's stuff the EPA says no, and then we end up paying a big ol' fine. And then some other, other things going on in Rumkeyland. A few of you guys came down probably a year or so ago to visit our recycling facility down in Columbus. A big part of that presentation we had with y'all down there was telling you about this new fancy-smancy recycling program we're building down there. That's complete. It went live last week, actually. It's the state-of-the-art recycling facility. It's the biggest recycling facility in North America. When, when we have it fully functional, we'll have it running up to 75 tons of recyclable material per hour. Our current facility, where your material's going now, runs at max, we max it out at about 55 tons per hour. So if you did the math, math over the course of an entire year, we're looking at about 250,000 tons annually that we'll be able to accept through the, through the MRF down there. And then also, with some of the changes in technology down there, we're hoping to add clamshell plastics that, like berries and, like, smaller fruits come in. We're hoping to add that to the acceptable items recycling list, hopefully by the end of the year. Once that, once we're comfortable with setting a go date and a live date, we'll have plenty of marketing material to send to Nick, and then you guys can distribute throughout, throughout your community. And I'll probably come, come back up here in the fall to hopefully discuss that further with you. And then also, while I'm here, just wanted to kind of check in to see as far as you guys are aware, how service is going throughout the community, if there's any issues at large we need to be aware of.
Just as Blake, like you know, we do, we're lucky to get every month the updates of how much municipal solid waste and recyclables we get. So we do provide that update to council pretty regularly. I appreciate your counter, or your, your folks in Crawford County who, who provide that to us. So, you know, between Blake and Tim, who runs Crawford, we got a good team that we work with here at Rumkey, and I appreciate their help.
Awesome.
And if you guys ever offer the tour again, I mean, I went the first time. It was a really interesting experience. Recycling did not quite happen the way that I expected, and it's actually pretty cool.
And the, the new facility's kind of simplified the process even further. There's more robotics, less manual sorting. It's a very, very cool experience. You guys are more than well, and it's as simple as getting your group together, sending me an email saying, "Hey, we'd like to come down." We get you on the schedule. We have a, last, the last tour you guys went on, it was, we basically showed you a slideshow of what you were going to see, and then walked you through the, through the tour. This new facility is more, it's more of an immersive experience. There's more of an educational aspect to it, and there's a, like, an actual surve- surveillance deck that you can stand on and watch it happen, so you're not weaving in and out of people trying to, trying to do their jobs. It's a little safer. We'd love to have you guys down there. Like I said, get a group together, send me an email, and we'll get you, we'll get you scheduled.
Really cool. If you like waste. I do.
Okay. Anything else? Questions?
Thank you.
No? Yeah. Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, the only trouble I have with my, like, the waste pickup, the, is I can't get my kids to bring the trash tote back to their house afterwards, but other than that, everything's working really well. So. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two things to report tonight. One is, is that we have received the fees required for the third reading of ordinance 2024-38 for the alley vacation. And then I have also received from the, excuse me, a petition for annexation of 79-plus acres on the north side of Tiber Road. I have received it from the Senate County Commissioners, and I have to hold on to that in my office for 60 days before it can be presented to council.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to call council's attention to ordinance 2024-37. That's up for third reading tonight, and that is putting, appropriating money for the prosecutor's budget for the part-time prosecutor. Also, I just wanted to say a couple more things about the request for suspension for ordinance 24-44. The other items that are in that, they're very similar items that you'll see in a lot of different ordinances. Some of the departments have sold assets, and so they get money back for that, and they want that back in their budget. Some of them are grants that they've received, and some of them are also for maybe property damages, where they had to pay something out of their budget to repair property damage. They got an insurance check back. They need that money back in their budget to replace that, because that was not a budgeted expense that they were expecting. So it's things like that that is in the rest of, of that ordinance. And also, ordinance 2024-40, that is also the same kind of thing. That is up for second reading. You can suspend that if you'd like, but it's up to you. But in that ordinance, it's a donation for the fire department, property damage reimbursement for police, a grant for parks, and there was a refund for Water Pollution Control Center. So that's the kind of things that it is, but it is entirely up to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Director of Law, Zach Fowler.
Thank you. I do just have a few things. Something that I might have kind of glossed over last time was just that we did have a change with the city prosecutor, but our current guy, Andy Bausch, who I talked about before, has been fitting in real well. I think he's doing a great job. We're happy to have him. Yeah, just, we have the third reading. As Kathy said, I would just ask for a passage for that tonight. And then, I mentioned this last time, then we have a contract with the county that's under review. We're going to ask you all to authorize that, and county prosecutor has sent that to the county commissioners for their review as well. But the general plan is to have this part-time position start July 1. So essentially, county prosecutor's looking to hire and bring on a full-time prosecutor who we would contract for 20 hours of her time to come over and help us. So that's, that's slated for July 1, so that's why we're just trying to keep the ball moving, so we can get those things done if you're all inclined to improve it. As far as the ordinance 44, I just thought I'd say, I ran this by Kevin. I thought we would try putting several of the finance directors' requests into one piece of legislation. Kevin said he was okay with it. But this is sort of a touch around to see if you guys are all, are comfortable with that idea. Usually, we space these out into multiple pieces of legislation. If you'd like to stay that route and have separate ordinances, doesn't make a difference to me. I just thought we'd test it out and see how that worked for you all. Is anyone having a question on putting those together? Okay. And then a couple of other items. So one, Anne announced she has that annexation. I sent you all kind of a long explainer on annexation and zoning. I thought it's a lot easier than me to try and sit here and tell you. If you have questions about it, let me know. This is kind of a long process to go through. I know there'll be some other zoning changes that are being requested as well, so we're going to try and run some of those together, because the change zoning, we have to bring both council together and the planning commission, and so organizing and doing that's not always easy. Tax budget, you also have as well, and I tried to send you kind of an explainer on what that's like, because this is, for many of you, your first time doing it. Again, if you have follow-up questions, let me know. Does anybody have any questions about those things? Because I sent some long emails. Okay. Yeah, I think that is all I have.
Thank you. All right, we are now under written communications.
We have Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-22, Water Street Purchase Agreement for Off-Site Treatment Facility.
Thank you. Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-22 will be assigned to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-23, Appointment to the Architectural Board of Review of Amber Clayson.
Thank you. Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-23 will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-24, Additional Position to the Tiffin Fire Rescue Division.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-24 will also be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-25, Contract for Assistant Prosecutor.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-25 will be assigned to the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-26, Establishment of Capital Projects Fund.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-26 will be assigned to the Finance Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-27, Proposed Zoning Code Amendments.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-27 will be assigned to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
And Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-28, OSS Grant.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 24-28 will be assigned to the Finance Committee.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-27, To amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate funds into the Police, Park, and WPCC budgets.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-27 is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-44.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-28, To amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate funds into the Law Director's Budget, and to reduce funds in the Prosecutor's Budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 24-28 will be assigned to the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-29, To amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate funds into the Civil Service Budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-29 is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-44.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 24-30, To consider the approval of the city's proposed annual tax budget, as required by ORC Section 5705.28.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-30 is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-43.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-31, To amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate funds into the Fire, Street, and Parks Budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-31 is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-44.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-32, To amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate funds into the General Administration Budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-24-32 is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-44.
And that concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Okay, seeing none. We are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution Number 2024-29, introduced by John Hayes. Resolution approving Mayor's Appointment of Sarah Lazari to serve an unexpired term on the Civil Service Commission from the date of this resolution through December 31, 2027.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 24-29. Councilmember Hayes.
I'd like to move to pass Resolution 24-29.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 24-29. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Snae.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kayler.
Yes.
Resolution 24-29 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 2024-37, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate $25,883 into the prosecutor's budget.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-37. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2024-37.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of ordinance 24-37. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Madam Clerk, I abstain due to the fact that I regularly practice criminal defense law and also regularly oppose the Tiffin City Prosecutor.
Thank you. Ordinance 24-37 passes with a vote of six to zero with one abstaining.
Amended Ordinance Number 2024-38, Introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, An Ordnance Responding to Petition Number 2024-01, Vacating the Alley Off of Frost Parkway, Running East-West Between Lots Numbers 517, 518, and 519 of Hemmings Resurvey and Lot Numbers 533 and 534 of New Fort Ball Edition in the Third Ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the third reading of amended ordinance 24-38. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of amended ordinance 24-38.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of amended ordinance 24-38. Is there a second? Councilmember Jones.
I second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Amended Ordinance 24-38 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-39, Introduced by John Kaler, An Ordnance Approving a Contract with the Seneca Industrial and Economic Development Corporation for Administrative Services of a Comprehensive Economic Development Program and Declaring an Emergency.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-39.
Ordinance number 2024-40, Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordnance Amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate funds into the annual budget.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-40. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President, and I move for immediate passage of ordinance 2024-40.
Suspending council's three reading rule.
Suspending, yes.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage and suspension of council's three reading rule for ordinance 24-40. Is there a second? Councilmember Horniman.
I'll second that, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Reisner.
I understand there included in this, there is a donation for the fire department. Appreciate the donation, and there were some grants for parks. Good work to the city departments for going after those.
Thank you. We will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-40 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-41, An Ordnance Responding to Petition Number 2024-02, Vacating the Alley Off of West Market Street, Running North-South Between Lot Number 598 of Hemmings Resurvey and the Alley Off of St. Clair Street, Running East-West Between Lot Numbers 596 and 597, and Lot Number 15, Olive Hemmings Survey, in the Third Ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-41.
Ordinance number 2024-43, Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordnance Adopting a Tax Budget for Fifth School Year 2025, Directing the Director of Finance to Deliver the Budget to the Seneca County Auditor and Declaring an Emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-43.
Ordinance number 2024-44, Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordnance Amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate funds into the annual budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-44. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 2024-44, Suspending city council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance 24-44. Is there a second? Councilmember Snay.
Second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-40 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-41, In Ordnance Responding to Petition Number 2024-02, Vacating the Alley Off of West Market Street, Running North-South Between Lot Number 598 of Hemmings Resurvey and the Alley Off of St. Clair Street, Running East-West Between Lot Numbers 596 and 597, and Lot Number 15, Olive Hemmings Survey, in the Third Ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-41.
Ordinance number 2024-44, Introduced by Kevin Reisner, An Ordnance Amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, To appropriate funds into the annual budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-44. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 2024-44, Suspending city council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance 24-44. Is there a second? Councilmember Snay.
Second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
And Kaler.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we can adjourn. Thank you.